Okay, everybody, thank you for your patience. It is October 3rd, it's 4:03. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'll go through rule call, planning commission members. Howard Trips.
Here.
Abby Domon.
Here.
Joey Edwards. Jamie Seifer.
Here.
Heather Lind here. County Commissioners, Commissioner Munch.
Here.
Marcella.
Here.
And Fiedler.
Here.
Any changes or additions to the agenda tonight? Okay. We have minutes to approve from September 25th. Thanks, those were super timely. Do we have a motion to approve those that still are there?
I'll move that we approve the minutes from September 25th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anne or Cece, anybody have updates that we want to do tonight?
Hello. Hello from Austin. I think the only updates that I, we've got a conditional use permit that will be heard in October. And so I think both of our regular meetings, please make yourselves available. If you can, we've got some good work coming up on several different projects, but we do have development applications coming up that are going to be heard. Also, looking to finalize the date on the 1041 to discussion facilitated conversation. So as soon as we have that, it seems like, I guess we only just met a week ago. So not a lot of updates. It's kind of the same things. We're waiting to set some days on the schedule and then we'll make sure that we get that out to everyone for participation. We certainly have some big topics coming up and really excited to start some work around those. But I think that's all I have for you tonight.
Great, thank you. For everybody on Zoom, if you would all do me a quick favor and in the, do we have chat disabled or do we have it on? Send us a chat with your full name so that we have that for public record. And then we ask that for the remainder of the meeting, after we have those, we'll disable chat and it will just be public comment and things like that will happen through a raising of the hand access from here. So we'll go down to new business. We have files 23-13 and 23-14 Gateway Village Major Subdivision and Plan Unit Development Sketch Plan. And and I pulled up the opening statement for the subdivision sketch plan that I have, but I didn't have one. Is it, is it going to be different for the PUD? You're muted, sorry.
It is a bit different for PUD and I can't get on VPN. I can't get on the network to send that over to you, but I would say you just need to reference within, in the script, section 3.11.3. That refers to the requirements for PD sketch. And then in the portion that speaks to the approval criteria, you'll want just one moment. You'll want section 3.11.3H. And I think as long as you have both of those sections, you could add it into the script dialogue. And I apologize for not being, having access to that document.
No problem. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read the opening statement for this file. The Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. This statement I'm reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on a major subdivision sketch plan and a planned unit development sketch plan application under sections 3.16 and 3.11.3 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the conditional use, or sorry, the sub, minor subdivision, major subdivision application and PUD sketch plan application should be approved. In considering that matter, the commission will address the approval criteria set forth in section 3.16.3H and 3.11.3H of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be, number one, members of the commission and/or the board will disclose if they've had any ex parte communications. Two, the county staff will make their initial presentation. Three, the applicant may then make their presentation. Four, after that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Five, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the commission and the board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the chair. Six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that you wish to say, please simply say so. The chair will also require that all comments be made to the planning commission and the board and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and the commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then leave the meeting and the chair of the Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. One, approve the application with no conditions. Two, approve the application with recommended conditions. Three, approve the application with newly identified conditions. Or four, deny the application. The planning director shall make a record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the commission. The commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I will now ask each planning commission member and then each county commissioner if they have had any ex parte communications to disclose and if so, to please disclose them now. Jamie Seifer.
Nope.
Howard Trips.
None.
Abby Domon.
None.
Heather Lind, none. Commissioner Munch.
None.
Commissioner Marcella.
None.
Commissioner Fiedler.
None.
The county staff may now make initial presentation.
Thank you so much. And this evening, since I am remote for the first time, I've never done this. I really wish I could be there with you all. What I think I would like to do, I know that the applicant has a presentation. So I'm just going to start with some basic information and really explain the process. It was brought to my attention that I think it would be really beneficial this evening to just kind of start off with an overview of how the major subdivision process and planned unit development process. It would be beneficial for everyone attending the meeting this evening to do that. So I am going to just start with some basic information and then I'm going to ask the applicant if they would be able to go ahead and let them do their presentation. And then we could move into a little more of the staff review. Does that sound agreeable to everyone?
Yes.
Okay. And can you see my share screen?
No.
Okay, just a minute. Can you see it now?
No.
I can see you.
Okay. Oh, I am not the host. Do you have, have you enabled the share screen?
Just go to advanced.
And then get one participant.
Oh, no, it says, it says all participants can share.
Okay, just a moment, I had it two seconds ago.
Okay, try now, Anne.
Okay, thank you. Try again. I apologize, give me one minute. Now. No, okay, well, I think I've lost my presentation. There, okay, so we're just going to chat through it. Tonight, this is a proposal for a major subdivision submitted in accordance with the requirements of the Land Development Code, section 3.16.3 for major subdivision and 3.11.3 for sketch plan PUD. The project is a 400-unit mixed-use, single-family homes, townhomes, and apartments, mixed-income housing development on approximately 43.37 acres. It's located off of County Highway, or State Highway 91, just north and east of Leadville at the, at 416 Ditch Placer. It has not been addressed yet. The parcel currently has dual zoning. It is, has business zoning as well as ag forestry. And the project proposes a mix of single-family homes, townhomes, and multifamily buildings affordable to a broad spectrum of the community. The current estimate for the rental and for sale units is rental units, 25% of the units being at an 80% area median income, 20% at or below 100% area median income, and 25% at or below 120% area median income. And the remainder, 25% potentially at market rate. The for-sale units have still been in discussion and will be fine tuned through negotiations and collaboration with the Leadville County Regional Housing Authority. This particular development is looking to enter into a public-private partnership and the details of those partnerships, of that partnership will be fine tuned through that collaborative approach. The project plans to build a mixed-use residential community in an area where pedestrian access is currently unavailable. However, with expanded routes and access opportunities through the eco-transit and summit stage, as well as Lake County Transit Planning, Transit Staff has been planned to be built in the area to make it easier for residents to connect to services and amenities in the city, county, and region. And as well as, there will be opportunities for the development to work with the PROS Department, which now offers the ability to have a collaborative approach, trail connectivity in conjunction with the Lake County Open Space Initiatives. The project in design includes internal sidewalks and trails to serve the residents and connect to the Transit Staff in any future regional trail connection off of South State Highway 91. The primary access is off of 91 with two emergency access locations off of both 91 and 24. Immediately, we determined there was really a need for consideration of access if one of these major commuter routes were to be compromised. And so in early stages of input and development of feedback from planning staff, we encouraged the development to look at that possibility. The developer has obtained financing through the Colorado Department of Local Affairs to acquire the land, actually through their Department of Housing loan. And they, again, look to enter into a partnership with the Regis, Lake County Regional, that Leadville Lake County Regional Housing Authority. Rural infrastructure funding is being pursued through USDA Rural Development Program. And the project has been accepted by the Colorado Middle Income Housing Fund, which provides tax-exempt bond financing for middle, missing middle income projects. I'm sure that the applicant, I see Michael Leahy is here and I'm sure that he can talk in greater depth about the funding opportunities that they are seeking to capital stack to bring this to fruition. The project proposes a maximum average density of 10 dwelling units per acre. The water is to be provided by Parkville Water. The sanitation needs are actually a collaborative approach that potentially fixes two community, a dual-community positive outcome with Mountain Valley Estates and the Gateway Village Community. This would be a joint opportunity to only have one discharge permit going into the Arkansas River, as well as there have been longstanding challenges associated with the Mountain Valley Estates sanitary needs. On top of that, Lake County has submitted a letter of interest into a strong communities brand that would further incentivize this collaborative approach to the sanitary needs of both of these communities. A Phase 1 environmental site assessment has been done, the finding of which are to conclude that this area is suitable for development and at low risk for any kind of environmental hazards. The only notable challenges may be around some slow stability, but that analysis will need to be brought forward at preliminary. One thing that I want to mention is the amount of review and collaboration that has gone into the review of this subdivision. This is undoubtedly the largest subdivision Lake County has ever entertained. And so it was very important in the early stages to provide guidance to the development team through the community development team, which met, I believe, with this applicant numerous times in order to provide guidance. As well as the land use review, three planners have reviewed the submitted application. It was a very complete and well-designed application, which actually made our work fairly easy. So thank you to the applicant for doing that. But in, on top of that, in addition to, I guess, we also had the Lake County Office of Emergency Management, Public Works, the Lake County Sheriff, Lake County Public Health, the School District, the Lake County, Leadville Lake County Fire Rescue, the Leadville Lake County Regional Housing Authority, Leadville Sanitation, Parkville Water, the City of Leadville, Colorado Department of Transportation, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, Colorado State Forest Service, the Colorado Department of Natural Resources, Division of Water Resources, the U.S. Forest Service, the Army Corps of Engineers, the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, and the Lake County, County Engineer, SEH. All review and provide at this stage of development, which is the concept stage of development, guidance within the staff report and direction to the development team for noted things that need to be taken into consideration or completed prior to or at the time of preliminary plan submittal. And to that, again, it was brought to my attention how beneficial tonight it might be to speak to this process. And so tonight, being brought forward to the public and to the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners are two separate and distinct applications, one being for major subdivision and one for planned unit development. Both have three stages that run concurrently in the review process. Tonight, we are hearing the sketch plan, which is the concept stage of the development. This is really where we look at, at the basics, at water, sewer, access, and feasibility of the overall plan. Does it meet our criteria? Does it meet our comp plan? Does it align with our policies, our codes, and any adopted plans? And so that's really the basis tonight. The next step of the development, once it achieves, or to achieve approval this evening, is to then venture into the world of preliminary plan for both sketch, or excuse me, for both a major subdivision and planned unit development. One of the other key aspects about planned unit development at this, at this time is to determine, is a planned unit development actually an improvement over what traditional major subdivision would bring forth? And so we really want to make sure that in, through this review process, that we identify that, yes, this, this would be a more favorable outcome under a planned unit development than it would be through the traditional zoning. Immediately, staff can identify that there are challenges with the dual zoning as well as the dimensional standards associated with each. Again, I'm sure the applicant will go into more detail on, on the specifics of that. The next stage is really where the rubber hits the road. This is really where the owners has put on the developer and development team to do all of the technical analysis and engineering to make sure that this subdivision could be brought to fruition. For both aspects, both the subdivision application as well as for the planned unit development. Planned unit development will also need an accompanying rezone application to rezone under, into the PUD zoning. And lastly, preliminary also has a public hearing process associated with it. So we meet this evening on the sketch plan. We will meet again for a public hearing process in a very vetted thorough review of preliminary. However, at final plat, there is not a public hearing associated with it. At the stage of final plat, we will be looking at making sure that all of the conditions of the previous two approvals, potential approvals have been met, that all the conditions have been taken care of and everything is complete within those requirements. Also, we will be looking to negotiate the subdivision improvement agreement and all legal documents associated with the development. These are all worked through with both legal engineering and staff to ensure that they have all been properly completed. And then that is brought forward back to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval for final plat. And that really concludes and kind of explains where we are in the development review right now, what stage that this is in. And happy to answer any questions about that. But at this time, I would love to turn it over to the applicant and let them move forward with their presentation unless, of course, there are any questions.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
Anne, it's Sarah. I just have a comment on the sketch, on the process. Thanks for that overview. And I just, I think it's worth kind of just restating to the outcome of the sketch plan review, as stated in our code, should be like to set out the issues and concerns of the Planning Commission and the VOCC for, to build a stronger application for the preliminary plan. So, go ahead.
Thank you so much for that, Sarah, too, because if I had my presentation, I, I do apologize. There's one more step in this particular application for subdivision. And that is a 1041 review. So that will need to be heard and decided prior to preliminary. So there are two criteria by which 1041 is triggered. These are 1041 reviews are areas of state interest. And in this particular case, it is the selection of a new community as well as the creation of a new wastewater treatment plant. So those are both triggers and already areas that have been designated by the Board of County Commissioners and by the county, that those are areas of state interest. So there is also a 1041 review that will be done prior to preliminary. And I'm, I'm sorry that I missed that.
Okay, Melissa, are you ready?
Very good. Well, thank you, Anne, for that thorough presentation. I never know what, what you're going to do, if you're going to go first or if.
So you'll just select it up there?
Yeah. So we're pulling up our presentation. And so I'm going to skip over some of the things because of, we don't want to be too redundant. But I am Melissa Kendrick and I'm part of the team that LDG put together for the Gateway Village. And so they're, they're working to get the presentation going. The author might have accidentally had some animation in here that. So anyway, I'm going to turn it over right now to Justin Hartz with LDG, who's going to introduce the team.
Melissa, Melissa, Justin. Nope, there's.
It's fine. It's fine, I got, I'm sorry, everyone, I've been traveling. I gotta catch, jump on a board, board of plan here in like three minutes, but I'm going to give you a three-minute over pitch real quick. LDG, multifamilies affiliate developer of LDG Development, based out Louisville, Kentucky. We're currently, we only develop and operate multifamily housing for the missing middle and affordable housing in nine states. Currently, we're operating, we have developed over 90 projects. Currently, right now, we are building and have raised missing many, missing middle equity to build these projects in three states. We have the expertise and we rely upon Melissa and, and EV Studio and Mike Leahy to really be the boots on the ground and really figure out the entitlement piece of our projects. And we're very excited about doing this project. We've been around since 1999. We operate as well close to 24,000 units nationally. We do bring in, our expertise is really the missing middle and bring in the housing that is needed for workforce communities. That's a little over pitch for y'all. If you have anything, you can ask me any questions as need be.
Thank you. Click a couple of times. Great. So, thank you, Justin. So our team consists of me, Brian Welch with EV Studios, whom you mentioned, and he's on the line, and that's the project engineer, Michael Leahy, which I think most of you are familiar with, but he's providing expertise around the capital stack, as we said. Should we go to the next slide? All right, the next one. We're going to scroll through these because it's better to be over-prepared. Click. Okay, stop there. Right, so this is, Anne kind of spoke to this verbally, but this is an image that helps us locate the property. I think y'all know where it is, but we have 91 on the right, on the west side, and we have 24 on the, well, opposite, on the west and the east. So it's a little bit north of that intersection. As Anne said, it's 43.5 acres. And you can kind of see here on the right-hand side where the access location is. That's the primary access and road through the development. We also have an emergency access at the northwest corner of the property off of, that's County Road 9A, that kind of winds through Mountain View Estates. So we'll, we're working on easement to be able to provide that emergency access. What's also important is what's adjacent to the property. We have Mountain View Estates to the north, as we've talked about. And then, you know, low-density residential in the south. So this property is really surrounded by residential. I think that's what I wanted to cover. Let's go to the next slide. Anne really touched on most of this, thinking what's important is that there, Alta Colorado is a metropolitan district that was formed quite a few years ago to provide service for this property. So it, the, the, the design of this is to have Alta Colorado build and operate a wastewater treatment plant when that happens. We are working with Mountain View Estates because, with an MOU, and some of that information was in your materials, but we keep refining that because we're going to, as part of the wastewater treatment, we'll provide service to those 80 mobile homes that are part in, part of Mountain View, Mountain View Estates. Sorry about that. uh, that are part in, part of Mountain View, Mountain View Estates. Sorry about that. Um, anyway, so that, that's underway. Uh, there is a zoning control document, which really is one of the things that supplements the land development code and a P U D. And so that document, I didn't make a slide of it, Anne referenced it. But in there, we differentiate um, the, a couple of planning areas. So why don't we go to the next slide? All right, so these are, this is the zoning exhibit. We've divided the property into two planning areas. The yellow is planning area one, the pink is planning area two. The yellow is all of the residential. So that's the single-family townhome, multifamily, all of that. And the purpose of this rezoning, why we couldn't use existing zone districts is there isn't one that does all of that. It's really a mixed-use neighborhood. And so that's the purpose of, of a P U D. And on, and the pink area is where the transit facility is. You can kind of see where that drop-off will be as well as um, the community center. And that, we're, we're, we've been thinking about its purpose and appreciated the condition of approval, I think, that speaks to childcare. We contemplated childcare as a conditional use in that location that will obviously need to be vetted. You know, we'll have to continue to work with those details. But we were thinking about the, the idea of wraparound services a little bit in this location because of the population. And not thinking of permanent locations for services, but places where, you know, whether it's food access or employment or, you know, medical care, maybe on a monthly basis, people come in and, and and they can, they, they don't have to get on the bus and, and leave the community. So all of that is part of the, the zoning control document and what we've thought about for this development. So I think that covers um, what I had to say. I'm gonna turn it over to Michael Leahy, the next slide, to talk more about the workforce housing and the wastewater treatment plant, which are really, as, as Anne pointed out, the big benefits to the community. All right, Michael?
Thank you so much, Melissa, and thank you, Justin, for teaming this up. And thank you, planning commission and commissioners. Um, we're really excited about this project. It's uh, it's not the first of its kind, but it's really innovative in terms of the philosophy behind the missing middle. And as some of you might know, traditionally there was low income and there was market rate. And we've seen a crisis in Lake County and other rural communities where that doesn't cut it anymore for the majority of workers, employees, local nurses, fire people. So our vision is a mixed-income, mixed-housing type community. Meaning that somebody, there will be some units that are priced towards the lower end of the spectrum of sixty percent to eighty percent. There will be apartments, there will be townhomes that'll be more of the middle. And then there will be some market rate homes. The idea being that somebody could uh, could live in a subsidized apartment, get a raise and not worry about having to lose their home. And in fact, rent the townhome across the street in the community. And then when you get that big raise or start your business or whatever it is, then there's market rate on the other side. So that thought of an ecosystem of different uh, income levels and different professions living together in this community is part of what really drives us. Some of the other focuses of the project are the wastewater treatment plant that not only would provide water for the project, but would solve it, as Anne and Melissa mentioned, an ongoing environmental issue for our neighbors and potentially provide capacity for future development in North Lake County, though that isn't contemplated by, by our plan. Uh, we do intend to engage the county and the housing authority in a public-private partnership. This is L D G, the master developer. This is part of their specialty and what they're known for. Um, and that ends up involving deed restrictions. And our plan would be as, to adhere as closely as possible to the Lake County land use best practices that were adopted last year through the hard work of many of you in the room. Um, through the, the IHOP and IHOI programs. Uh, financing will come through a mix of sources and we are blessed in Colorado to have so many options. We've got this, uh, the Colorado Department of Housing Finance, DOLA, social impact funds, and new tools such as Prop one twenty-three um, that really make it possible to help underwrite a project that isn't priced to the, the top of the market. Um, and then in terms of the housing units, we're proposing three hundred and thirty-six apartments that are broken up into twenty-four unit uh, three-story buildings. There's, there'd be thirteen of these buildings. Of course, and I should have said upfront, this will not be all happening at once. It'll be phased in over a number of years. Uh, and so three-story walk-up garden-style apartments. L D G's philosophy is that you should not be able to tell that it is a subsidized or deed restricted unit from the outside, that it will look and feel like a brand-new market-rate apartment. We're also proposing for-sale townhomes with an idea to partner with potentially the Chaffey Housing Trust, who also works in Lake County and is currently developing a project, a smaller project in the rail yards to create some workforce housing for-sale product as well. And then there will also be twenty-two freestanding market-rate homes. Next slide, please. I think I, I'll, I'll uh, go quickly on this slide, cause I think I've already kind of spoken to the benefits as Anne and Melissa have. Well, just a few of the benefits, you know, that you wouldn't normally think of besides supplying a generation of housing for, uh, for our workforce is uh, the, the volume of construction activity will be, uh, will create a local economic impact. Modular construction itself, which we've talked with fading West and other modular providers, helps relieve the burden on the local construction labor workforce. And in fact, allows these projects in Colorado to happen at all when there's a, a deficit of, uh, of traditional construction labor. And then again, the wastewater treatment plant, um, not only benefits us, but the broader community. I think we'll probably take questions at the end. Is that right, Melissa? Although if anybody has anything.
Yes.
Piping, yes, we'll, we'll, we'll take questions at the end. Again, thank you for your time and I'll turn it back over to you, Melissa.
Okay. Next slide, please. All right, Brian, are you there? And you ready to talk about the plan?
I am here. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Perfect. Yeah, as, as everyone mentioned, my name's Brian Welch. Uh, I'm a, an engineer with E V Studio and we've been working with the team since two thousand twenty um, on multiple different iterations of this project. And I, I think that's important, cause as Anne mentioned, you know, as we've worked through different iterations and concepts, you know, ideally you wanna see improvements in iterations. That, that's kind of the, that's kind of the objective as we go through iteration by iteration. And I, I think the, the multiple years have really allowed us to refine the concept and find a really good balance between density and design. And in really embracing the, the topography and, and just the, you know, the, the way the, the, the land lays out through that area. You can see here what, what we've done is created really a center corridor that routes people to different areas of the development. And, and then essentially it splits people off to different areas of use. Uh, and, and one thing that, that, why that's important is just for safety as far as not wanting a lot of vehicle conflict and, and driving straight into a parking lot. And one thing we'll show you as we work through these drawings is we, we really create a, a really large native vegetation strip on each side of that center, that center corridor to make it feel like you're driving through, you know, through how, through how it looks right now. Um, so, so a lot of tree canopy, a lot of native trees, cause, cause that area is really well-vegetated. Uh, obviously, one, one thing that, that fire noted is making sure that we go through defensible space and we thin things out and we clean it up. And so we're talking the, the larger, more mature trees, not the underbrush and the growth and the old logs and stuff like that. So that's one of the main focuses, is really creating a center corridor that then splits off to each area. You know, with, with single-family residential being in the, the northwest corner, one thing we wanted is for them to feel like they have a development in an area where, where they live, as well as some multifamily. And, and you can get to your own spaces without driving through other peoples. And, and that comes to, to noise and light, making sure that people, that people have their privacy. So what we've done is the, the east entry area is the only public section of road that goes to the loop that's in front of the, the transit station as, as the team has mentioned. And then from there, traveling west, it becomes a private development as far as private roads that are privately maintained. Uh, so doubling up on, on public transit with public maintenance versus private maintenance and private transit. So that, that's really how we're, how we're blending those two together. Uh, you can see the, the, the larger three-story walk-up product that Michael referenced is along the south and along the center. And then the, the single-family is to the northwest with townhomes bridging that density gap between the three-story and the single-family. With, with obviously parking to support the buildings along the way. We can go to the, there's, there's obviously the development table that lists parking, garages, units, and, and really just making sure that it's, it's adequately parked. Uh, as Anne mentioned, we've had three years' worth of conversations with, with county staff, with transit staff, with, with, with public works to make sure that we're all comfortable on that balance between maintenance and, and vehicles and support and density. And I feel like we, we have a really good balance. You can go to the next slide.
All right. I think it might be my turn. Do you, do you have anything else, Brian?
No, I, I think the bigger thing is just, you know, obviously we can, we can show them other sheets if they're interested as far as showing the vegetated areas. Um, we can certainly walk through utilities if needed, but, but really have, have worked through to make sure that everything is feasible and designed, you know, that balance is practical, but also kind of matching the environment. And, and like I said, I think we have a, you know, on our landscaping plan, we have o- over eight acres of native vegetation in the center of the site that's being maintained. You know, obviously, you know, looking at the outskirts of the plan even more as far as untouched native land. Um, you know, obviously large buffer strips between each highway and the development are, are also important as well as, like Melissa said, having those, the, the access points to both highways for safety um, as well as moving people. So lots of conversations with C dot uh, and everyone else. So happy to answer questions as we work through this.
All right. So we're almost done. Um, we have a couple of slides here related to the approval criteria. And there's a lot of overlap between the two applications, so I'm kind of summarizing these. Um, but for you all to make a recommendation of approval or to approve this, uh, we have to meet these criteria. So we do believe we're consistent with the call plan. This area is, is designated as developed residential. And the plan looks at really compact development. So we believe that ten use per acre is a, a good number and it's a, a very efficient land use. Additionally, an important policy relates to housing diversity. And I think we've painted you a pretty good picture of the diversity that we're trying to provide in this application. The second item is the consistency of the land development code. I mean, there's four sections of the code. It's really a lot of, of text. But I think that in summary, the important ones are like road design. And we kind of showed you how we have some private road and we have some public road. And there's been questions about those roundabouts, if you will. And in talking with Mike Erwin, the, the, the county doesn't have a, a standard for that, but we will design something that he will review, that he will, you know, he'll be comfortable with it or will have to redesign. So in the end, I, I think we'll uh, be able to address that. We talked about, Anne talked about the trail design. We got some good comments from the city related to this. And, and we're really anxious to work with the partners we need to, to look at regional trail and how to connect up the regional, this project to a regional trail system. So we'll work on that. And then um, as Brian was talking about, we have, have met and exceeded the twenty-five percent requirement for open space. So I think we've kind of talked quite a bit about the efficiency of the spatial pattern is the, that what we need to address. And that we believe in grid, especially on this land. There's a lot of areas of the county that are very, um, there's a lot of topography. But this really sits up above the Arkansas and the Evan Sculch and it's relatively flat. Um, so that, that grid pattern makes sense and it allows us to really capture, to keep the canopy of trees. Um, and there is water available across ninety-one. So there isn't a big extension of water to get to this property and we will be providing um, new wastewater treatment. So we think that's important again, and address the suitability of the land. So I won't go there again. Um, the compatibility with surrounding land uses, we're, are surrounded really by residential at this point. And so as the call plan um, dictates, we, we think that's a, a good land use. So we fit right into the neighborhood. And then adequate facilities, again, we've talked about water sewer. We're working with um, a broadband provider, you know, trying to figure that part out. As you probably know, it, it requires uh, extensions into the, into North Leadville. So working with Excel, um, the school district, um, Lake County, the, the fire district. So, you know, and moving into preliminary plan, all of these things will get refined. So one more slide. And there's the, the additional two criteria have to do with the P U D development standards. And so that zoning control document um, is where all of that information lives, where we've defined the dimensional standards that are required in this. And um, and we will, there, there's a lot of unknowns yet about building design and landscaping and so on. So we will come back to you with more information on that. And, and we've talked a great deal about the affordable housing plan. So anyway, that's the criteria. We believe we meet them. Um, next slide, please, which have to do with conditions of approval. And if I've done my job well, we've kind of addressed all of these, which I, I think we pretty much have. So there are eight conditions. We agree to these conditions. Um, the, the Division of Water Resources had some questions about Parkville, actually that district. Um, so we'll be working with them, but we have a letter that says they can provide water service for us. We'll make sure we comply with uh, their requirements, the verification for stormwater facilities. So I think um, we've talked about C dot. So I think, I think that covers it. I think we've kind of addressed it. You guys have been listening to us for a long time. So with that, I have a final thank you slide for your time and attention. And we are available for questions when you're ready.
Awesome. Thank you. Anne, did you have a follow-up uh, to continue on with the, with your staff report? Um, I did have, uh, oh, they, is that, was that the phasing plan? Um, did you?
It was, yeah.
Could you just kind of, that, that was one notice I was listening, that I was wondering if maybe you could share um, just kind of the phasing plan?
Right. Yeah, let's see, that's, go back one. Brian, can you step in and answer that question?
Absolutely. Um, we have our full, we have our full set that we submitted at the back end of these slides just for reference in case, in case there was a question on a specific plan. So Melissa kind of worked those in for, just for this exact reason. Uh, you know, how, how we'd work the phasing was really looking at, at green as phase one. So getting that main corridor in, getting the, the, the treatment plant in and starting on the south side, that, that pairs up with both utilities with, with access and with development. And then really, you know, the, the single-family side on the west can, can really be worked in throughout this process. As soon as the road is developed, you could progress with it, with a handful of single-family lots. But then for us, really working back um, you know, through the north with some of the orange and blue as far as phase, if you wanna call it three and four, uh, with that last single-family stretch to the north being a little more isolated. So really showing that progression tying utilities in with, with land development and with treatment being important pieces.
Thank you um, for sharing that. I just thought that, that was part of my presentation. It's, that was one slide that, that I, I um, had included because I think that um, it's important to see um, the reason, the executive director for uh, the housing authority just noted um, the desperate need of those rental units. Um, and so uh, I think that there's a lot of merit. Um and so uh I think that there's a lot of merit in seeing that in uh the first uh phase of the development. Um. So I just wanted to, they've already, the applicant has really spoken to some of the conditions of approval. But I did want to make sure that everyone was aware of some of the concerns that we heard back or things that we. Heard from the referral agents that they would really like the development team to consider at any future stage of development. And for EMS, fire and the sheriff's office, there they shared some common themes um in what we heard back from them. And that was making sure that the fire apparatus can negotiate the roundabouts. To make sure that that's not a concern. Also, there was um consideration for sprinkling uh maybe required under the I B C. Uh may um I think that we didn't disallow townhomes in our resolution. Consideration for traffic calming in the area. I will just um as members of the Board of County Commissioners aware as a staff that, you know, these are. These have been concerns for quite some time in that that area and will be continuing to look at um outcomes that might support. EMS, fire and Sheriff's Office concerns in in that location for access. Looking at fire mitigating planning, um whether that's defensible space or uh again, asking for consideration on sprinkling of units. Certainly, the apartment buildings under the I B C will be required um to have that. And then uh E V charging stations, um something that um certainly is something that we'd like to at least have input and consideration on on the next. State phase of development. If if that is something um. That the development team could consider. Um then from public works, again, those concerns were um communicated and responded to roadway design. Um and maintenance, specific to maintenance, stormwater drainage, and then snow storage, and all of these will come in further detail, of course, at preliminary. The school district has um responded with an actual dollar amount um based on inflation. For uh the in lieu of school and dedication and the amount of four hundred and seventy-four thousand eighty-four dollars. And they also talked about the importance of safe um bus stops and outdoor play spaces. Um the Housing Authority uh gave a letter of support and a a call for collaborative efforts. And service in order to look at addressing the um. Housing crisis that we're in as well as the housing needs associated with our community. The City of Leadville uh referral brought forth again um. Uh is supportive of the housing uh initiative uh bring that's being uh brought forward by uh this development. They also want a consideration of some of those same similar themes, transportation and multimodal connectivity. Brought forth the recommendation, and it sounds like you're uh thinking about that for perimeter public trail easement, how that can work into additional open space. As well as just really about adds a lot of amenity value to the subdivision overall. Um and then childcare is certainly um a issue that our community is also addressing in tandem with housing. And so the thought of making sure that that would be um considered in your zoning control document uh would be very important. And then storage and recreation parking. There is discussion in the staff report of. Consideration that maybe there is a room to first light reduction in parking that might be able to accommodate some exterior storage, as well as consideration for interior storage and then. Uh recreational vehicle parking as well. C dot uh needs more information. We'll we'll look at the traffic study in order to determine the level of access permit. That will be forthcoming that you touched on as a condition of approval and that you're aware of. Uh again, Department uh Division of Water Resources, just statutory requirement. That they have Parkville, Parkville provide the necessary um proof of adequacy for the water supply, um an extension to the. To the proposal. And Army Corps of Engineers, my recollection is with a previous iteration of Gateway, we weren't able to determine that no permit was needed. But again, at this junction, we we do need that uh determination again. Um and then, of course, all of the S E H, uh the county engineer did give some uh very meaningful. Feedback and comments um from an engineering standpoint that we would be looking to have addressed at preliminary. Um additionally, staff mentioned that consideration of home-based occupations, and it's always easier to add in very intentional uses at this stage. Then to have to go back and and um modify or amend that document later down the road. Um also talked about ways to have a more integral connection. And kind of get away from that leapfrog um idea, although we've talked in the staff report about. That the physical geography sometimes precludes um the ability to have uh population centers as close as we would like. Um but but some amenities and uh ways in which to look at a more integral connection could be the trail as. That we've been speaking about, as well as maybe consideration for any kind of sporting facilities um that are available to the entire community. A playing field administered by the county could could encourage that kind of interconnection between two population centers, and maybe it's worth considering. Studio apartments, um you know, we I I would just again, um the Housing Director, she keeps a list, I think, of um in a. Over uh with a list of maybe close to three hundred with on the waiting list. And I think maybe that might just drive your design a little bit. Um and so you might want to consider that. Again, we have this huge new trend and interest in tiny homes, and a five-hundred-square-foot studio is still twice the size typically of of the tiny homes that we're seeing trying to. Uh come into the community as an answer to affordability. Um. I think that pretty much covers anything um that we had within um the staff report. Thank you so much for speaking. Directly to the approval criteria. Of course, that's the basis of any findings that we could be made this evening. And so within the staff report, um staff is provided to the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. Um and to the public um within that staff report, any additional comments or thoughts on uh those approval criteria in depth. And so I don't think that staff has anything further this evening unless there's particular questions from either the Planning Commission. On the Board of County Commissioners or the public.
Okay, we'll start with uh any uh commissioners. Planning Commission members have any immediate questions for. The staff or applicant?
None.
Go ahead, Jamie.
A few questions. Thank you so much for the great presentation. This is a very thoroughly submitted application, and I would say I'm seventy to eighty percent in favor. Um I just have a couple clarifying questions. One is actually to staff. And I was curious if you could speak in the. Process of what we're doing to approve this, what things are like flexible to change in the future and what aren't. And specifically, I'm asking about the rental housing percentage designation. Is that something that could set in stone tonight, or is that something that is amenable in the future?
Um great question. Thank you, Jamie. And and I also think the applicant would want to probably speak to this just a little bit, too. Um so what this will call for um prior to um preliminary. Is is a really deep dive between the development and the Housing Authority to really help inform those numbers. It also um Michael can probably speak to any funding requirements that it needs to align to. So happy to say that that I don't think that those numbers this evening are set in stone. Um I think that um they may need to be fine-tuned a bit. I think that I actually already saw um. A percentage of the housing maybe going up to a hundred and forty percent A M I. And I and maybe that is the for-sale um housing stock. And not the rental stock. But happy, I see Michael um shaking his head and just waiting for an opportunity to speak, so happy to turn it over to the applicant for more specifics.
All right, go, Michael.
Thank you, Ann. So there are a a kind of bewildering number of funding sources and. Fun for us, they all have slightly different average median income requirements. And so the one that we're using is the one that CHAFA, the Colorado Housing Finance Agency, uses, which is the strictest. Uh that it requires twenty-five percent of the units at eighty percent A M I. Twenty-five percent can be at the market rate. Although in that in Lake County, the market rate for those apartments is roughly a hundred to twenty percent. And so the remaining units, the remaining fifty percent can be somewhere between eighty and one-twenty. So we said sixty to one-forty because those are the broader uh uh guidelines. But the project is intended to be, and CHAFA requires that those units be between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent on the rental units. On the for-sale townhomes, as we've, as as I think many of us know, and if you've been involved with the rail yards, uh Chaffey Housing Trust project. It's very, very difficult to get for-sale housing below a hundred percent. And so the and that's even using, working with a housing authority and state grants. So the target there for the workforce for-sale townhomes would be about a hundred percent A M I. And then the market rate units would be the twenty-two freestanding homes to the northwest of the property. So to summarize all that, the apartments will be in that eighty to one-twenty range. There is the potential that a phase of the buildings could be low-income. Uh low-income house using tax credits, and that would be sixty percent, and that's something that we'll continue to explore with the community.
So of all of all of the housing, it's. The only market rate or those single-family?
That's right.
Those twenty-two?
That's right, yeah.
The upper end of the rental spectrum starts to get towards market rate. And that's something we can, we can put some numbers behind because that is, that's a little bit confusing. So the there is twenty-five percent of the rental units will be about a hundred and twenty percent A M I, which is around the market rate. But they will still be subject to the same deed restrictions. The the whole property would be subject to these deed restrictions. Which the developer will agree to and which will continue until um until the end of those restrictions.
All right, thanks so much. And Michael, just so you know, the camera is here, but the screen is up here, so when you're, when I'm talking to you, I'm here, but you know, anyway, just for the people at home. Appreciate the answer about the numbers being somewhat movable in the future. I'm curious to know what the um distribution of the varying rental units will be amongst the units. Do you imagine that each building will be of a similar designation, or will the units be kind of sprinkled throughout?
That's a great question. For the missing middle, they would be sprinkled throughout. So the intention is that there wouldn't be a way to tell which units were eighty percent, which were a hundred, and which were one-twenty. That's part of L D G's strategy. If there were to be a light tech project, which is the sixty percent A M I, that cannot be sprinkled because of how the federal tax credits function. So if we did do a building or a a subset of the of the uh twenty-four plexes as light tech, those would be individual projects. But to the extent that it will be missing middle, those will be sprinkled throughout.
Great, that's what I was hoping for. Um I'm curious about L D G's experience in climates that are similar to Leadville. It looked like a lot of their projects that were up on that slide are in warmer climates. And I'm curious if maybe anybody who's boots on the ground, as it were, could speak to just what that means to develop a project here. I know there were a few comments in the report about snow storage and things like that.
I think it's. Oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead. Yes.
I I think that's correct to say, and frankly, L D G had a little bit of a sticker shock. When they first looked at the project and realized how expensive it is to develop in Colorado. They are in Tennessee and Texas and Louisiana that are are lower cost of development states. Um and so part of their strategy is when they're doing a project in a state that they aren't intimately familiar on, they really rely on the the boots on the ground. And in this case, there will be a general contractor, a Colorado general contractor engaged, who will be deeply experienced with mountain environments. Um and and the design practicalities of that. So I I, you know, I think L D G is aware of the difference between Colorado and and these other states. And will rely that much more on a qualified statewide G C who has deep experience in these mountain environments.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm curious, you mentioned that one of the ways that this project could be expedited is through the use of prefab construction, and I know it feels like everybody is barking up fading West's tree to be cranking out units. In your conversations with them, do you have a rough idea about what their real availability is? Because I remember at some point, they were maybe only able to put out seven hundred units a year. I don't know if that number's changed. I don't know if I'm misinformed, but I'm just curious how that uh fits into putting these units online, and if you've got a rough amount of their bandwidth.
You are correct. I think that it's closer to a thousand now because they've uh they've continued to increase their efficiency, but you are correct that there's uh bandwidth limitations for fading West. And so we are meeting, we actually have uh a G C that we're talking to who just finished the Breckenridge. The seventy unit, or I guess they're still finishing, the seventy-unit Breckenridge um Justice Center project. And while fading West is one of the options who we'll look at, there are actually a number of factories outside of Colorado, in Idaho in particular. Who are able to achieve a lower cost per square foot than fading West because they have bigger factories. Now, you're still going to have shipping expense that'll eat up some of the savings. But for a project of this size, L D G's thinking that they might in fact engage a number of modular developers um to uh to address those capacity issues. So that will be a kind of a front and center um uh idea as the phasing is finalized. To make sure, of course, well in advance, that that factory has enough capacity, whether that's fading West or an out-of-state factory.
Yeah, we have actively been working with them. We were recently at their factory to talk about production, so. They certainly are the right business at the right time.
No doubt. Cool, uh just one last question, if I may. I see a lot of familiar faces on the screen. I see a lot of new faces. Obviously, you've done your homework and made the right amount of partnerships. It's curious to me that there's somebody missing from the room, which is anybody from the Housing Authority as maybe your most consequential partner in this project. Can you help me understand why they're not here today?
Well, we have met with them extensively. Michael has, and he can speak to this more. So they've they've been a part of these conversations. I mean, this project started even before the Housing Authority existed. So we've kind of been in the whole evolution. So now we're pretty excited to actually have, you know, s- someone, you know, and and an organization to work with in this partnership. So all of these applications for funding and so on have have had to have their their acknowledgement, if not approval.
Yeah, and they were in the staff report as a referral agent with a a pretty lengthy comment. Uh kind of talking about their support and their interaction throughout this application process and. Really expecting like all of those entities to to be here. They're not. Their job is more like if uh like Michael's probably here for if we end up with questions on road. But it's not a requirement. They're not here to support the applicant. They're just here as a resource for us as part of this application. So them not being here is not a sign of support or non-support of an application.
Sure, no, I was just curious. I mean, the city is here and many other entities that are less involved than the Housing Authority and for the largest housing project.
She walked in and out to get something.
Jamie, excuse me for just a moment, just a minute. Um also, Jamie, um Chapin and I are both on the Subcommittee Development Subcommittee for the Housing Authority. So um we're both here and present as well. Um and so we we participate in the development review for the um Housing Authority. So um we we are present.
Cool, thanks, Ann.
Yeah.
I just had a question about access and and just what that process was. On first blush, one access point seems. Like not enough. And and I and I. And, and I, and I know CDOT is a referral and, and you guys will continue to work with them on preliminary, but just curious.
Yeah, well, we have gotten, we've worked with them in terms of where that access is located and that, and its adequacy. And so far, we haven't applied for access permits. We will do that. But they, that, that hasn't been part of the conversation to my knowledge. We have that emergency access on the other side, so that, that does give us, and, and I think one of the iterations of this project, we were directed kind of like the better direction to go would be down 98 to 24. And so that really, I think, satisfied Public Works and the fire department. Brian, would you add anything to that?
Yeah, yeah, there, so I guess there, there's been a lot of conversation with CDOT. And obviously, we have LSC transportation engineers on board as far as working with, with CDOT as the transportation experts. The, the really critical piece is that what it does require is a half a mile separation between your next closest intersection, which is the intersection of 91 and 24. And to get a half a mile separation puts you right at the edge of the property on both, on both sides. If you look at the 24 side, there's a lot of actually environmental impact with, with different wetland, with different wetland areas down that west side, which is one piece. The second piece is that it, it actually is a relatively low volume of traffic for, for an intersection. And, and so part of the argument with that is you actually want to minimize the conflict points. And instead of spreading out a little bit of traffic at multiple different intersections, you really want one very well-controlled intersection to prevent the number of conflict points. So there's a, there's a couple of different pieces. That, that's why it's a balance between providing two different areas of emergency access with one primary point of access. So yeah, a handful of different pieces go into that.
That, that's helpful to know, and I think it, it kind of, that whole stretch of 91 is just wonky to begin. It's because it goes to two lanes and then it, and then it narrows right back down. I know Jeff, we, we, many moons ago, we had tried to talk about this, but you know, it's, it's, if you really, I think there's a really cool opportunity if with this amount of development that would be happening, that improvement along all of 94 could be pretty great, just, you know, for the, for the trail connection, you know, for calming the traffic through there, for re-envisioning what 91 and 24 could even look like. I know that's not all on you guys, but I just think that, like, if, I think it kind of puts more of an emphasis on the need if this development does happen. Because you don't want anyone walking on those sidewalks. And then the lack of sidewalk along that stretch. So I appreciate knowing, you know, the distances that are required and, and, you know, I just, in my mind, I think of that, you know, everyone's leaving at the same time in the morning and, and coming back near at the same time at night. But if, but if there was a kind of broader, more holistic approach that could, you know, funnel through on traffic circles or what have you, then, then yeah, maybe, maybe the actual feeding in and out of the development isn't as much of a concern.
Heather, could I comment on that?
Yeah.
I know I need to jump the line, but just so we don't bounce around topics too much. I mean, to say, so, so the county has a significant amount of CDOT planning money. And it's a shame we're not like a year ahead on that, but I think sometime, hopefully earlier rather than later, in 2024, we should have some planning work done to CDOT steps from that whole section of 24, basically from like Safeway out to the 91-24 intersection. So hopefully it'll be like a little bit more for, you know, to, to, to your point, like, you know, to actually try to mesh with. You know, because right now that's a bit of a blind. You know, hey, mesh with this future plan. It doesn't exist yet, but I think that is coming and we have money to do. And then related to that, it, it's not in our planning, but I just want to make sure as you keep working with CDOT, they have done preliminary design work on traffic circles for entrance into Gateway and 91-24. I just want to make sure that doesn't get lost, because it was done two years ago and I don't know what staff transition has happened, but I'd be curious to make sure that gets sort of re-insured.
Well, I think it's still on the table.
Okay.
I think as we progress to the next stage, it's gonna, you know, they've talked conceptually and as we get more serious, they'll need to get more serious and we'll have to start to make decisions, you know.
Do you, do you have the plan, there are two, 20 pages?
We do, yeah.
Okay, okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
We do.
Excellent, okay.
From a pedestrian and a traffic calming perspective, it's probably a great solution.
Yeah, I mean, and to the sheriff's office comment, I mean, I think, you know, the preliminary design work had speeds going down to 35. If there was a traffic circle for the gateway entrance, it would be 35 as you enter and slower in the circle itself, which does a great job of slowing stuff down coming into the main stretch. And then I think, I think the one at 91-24 at least has some conceptual ideas about how to get sort of pedestrian and bike traffic across 24 safely to get connectivity between this development and sort of, you know, as, as town grows out, you know, with rail yards, 1, 2, and 3, or Fading West, whatever we're calling it now. So, yeah, but I think back to the, the point is like, as you proceed with this, we, we will have outreach from the planning contractor and then hopefully like finished work done, you know, in, in I think a relevant timeframe for, for you all to have a look at and see.
Yeah, it sounds like it. I, we were wondering where the county was and their, their planning side of this, you know, so that's good enough.
So yeah, so I mean, we have the contract signed, so we have now permission to put the RFP out. We just have to like find a new RFP, have someone.
And is that specifically, oh, it's from Safeway to the?
Yeah, I mean, it, we drew some like fuzzy lines around the boundary. So I think we have some flexibility in that contract work. So it's, you know, but it was roughly indicated from like the Safeway traffic light. And maybe a little further towards town, like across from rail yards.
Yeah.
Out all the way down the four lane stretch of 24 to 91-24. And then that's, and then not really a queue, but there's also like a major area study out by the Mountain View Blind Corner, 124. That stretch, basically from Safeway out to you all was like a primary area.
Yeah, it would be good to have it all coordinated to your point.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you.
Howard, did you have any initial questions?
No, not at this point.
Sure, I, just to add on to that, the conversation about the CDOT and the corner planning, I think that is one large thing for me that sticks out and really needing to meaningfully physically connect the, the neighborhood to the, the more urban core in that Safeway area so that we don't end up with another outlying neighborhood that we really struggle and try to get connectivity to. And I imagine that might even look, I mean, I don't know what that will look like. We'll see with the plans. I would love to extend those up further north so we can get thoughtful engineering and design work on a, a community and, and use of this size. But, you know, underpass, overpass, I'm not, I'm not sure what that looks like. But I think encouraging that is really important for us to do. And then, let's see, I have the roundabouts, I'm very, well, I guess, I, I, some, some, separating the, the private and the public roadways. I'm super curious about how Alta, you know, I, I would like to require some performa on the revenue that you think it will generate to be able to sustain the maintenance and the district performance. I, I would love to see project experience and references in the preliminary application for staff to call and, and check up on, on the developer and on Alta. Is, is my understanding of Alta has just been that it is Gateway. Is that correct or is it a larger district?
No, it is the properties that Evergreen Land owns, right? So Brian, can you speak to this question? The question is Alta Colorado's metropolitan district boundaries. And maybe, Michael, you have, one of you have a good handle on that.
Yeah, there are, there's a metro district with several sub-districts. And so the sub-districts that would be relevant to Gateway Village would be Alta Colorado number one, which would be the, the community itself, and then Alta Colorado number two, which would be the wastewater treatment plant.
And so it's for the 43 acres? It doesn't go beyond? We don't have districts beyond that? No?
There, there are other, other districts, but the, yeah, this is solely focused on Gateway Village.
I guess, I guess to share just frankly, I'm not really interested on behalf of the county to get another letter from CDPE on a failing HOA or special district. We have a few of those in the county. And I would really love to see a conversation with Leadville Sanitation potentially even to see if they have interest in managing this kind of isolated off-site system. I think that makes a lot more sense. And Parkville will be operating the water delivery, correct?
Yeah.
As the supplier?
That's right.
So I, I, I would like to see that conversation happen in preparation for the preliminary. I just, I just am not. Maybe it's not our experience, in our community's experience. It's, I would love to understand how the LDG or Gateway would think that that, that could be possible to, to.
To have a sustainable.
Yeah.
Metropolitan district, right?
Have a sustainable metropolitan district. I mean, especially, and, and kudos to the joint, you know, the adjacent community of Mountain Valley Estates and really integrating a system with them. That helps multiple parties. But how, because then they would be subject to the, the success of the operation of the district. I think it's really important to make sure that we have a plan in place, a solid, well, plan and some proof. I'm not sure what that looks like.
Permission or much? Oh, sorry. I, I, I think, I, I'll speak for the developer. I believe that would be their preference would be to do it that way. And the separate district is set up not, is so that we don't assume that we can do that with the sand district. But I think they'd be very open to working with an existing, to support an existing district or constructing it and getting it operational and then combining, combining forces. So I think that's something that the developer would be very interested in, in pursuing further.
And we've had, we've had a handful of conversations with Leadville Sanitation to date. And, and I'm sure it's one we'll, we'll continue to have more conversations with them as, as we move along. But yeah, we, we definitely have been in touch with, with Leadville Sanitation and talked about the district and, and what some options are.
Okay, thank you. And, and I guess back to that kind of maintenance, I don't know if the district is also, would, I would think would be plowing the roads and doing those roundabouts. And just again, I appreciated Jamie's question about location and LDG's experience. I think CDOT's highway roundabouts work because they're out there 24/7 plowing when snow's on the ground. And I think it, it ends up being a really different circumstance as a private, you know, user and entity trying to maintain that and keep up throughout the day on a 24-hour basis. So I would, I appreciate that you're relying on our Public Works and, and perhaps maybe CDOT's insight on that. And then the, I am really concerned about the surface water drainage. There are, yes, residential properties surrounding, but there's also some ag and grazing. Obviously, the Arkansas River is super close by. And with, again, current surface runoff issues in the community, I would love to see some proposal on monitoring and, and really getting those points of dispersment from the property site and how those might affect the adjacent owners and adjacent properties. And how, how that's going to be monitored, monitored for those adjacent properties and for the effluent or, or runoff that might enter the Arkansas River. Well, storage, I think S, SCH brought that up in some of their comments. And it looked like maybe there was some space to alter with the parking spaces versus some of the sizes of the units in, in the response, but parking storage, well, both snow storage, but also I'm thinking recreation storage, toy storage. Would be, is another great thing to maybe enhance.
We thought that was a good comment. You helped me to reduce the flooding.
We don't get that every day.
You don't. Question goes, so, yeah.
Kayla?
Sure. So I, I definitely can appreciate the amount of thought that's gone into transportation planning and connectivity planning. But when I, when I think about true transit oriented development, I think about multimodal transportation incorporated into the development. And so included in multimodal transportation are various forms of transportation and connectivity between multiple communities. And especially with this development having affordable housing units for incumbent residents, I, I just wonder if there, if there can be more detail provided on connectivity on multimodal forms of transportation. So not only inclusive of bus routes, but bike and walkability to and from the development and neighboring communities and our urban core. Childcare is continuing, does continue to be a problem in Lake County, contrary to what you might have seen on Facebook. It, it is an issue. There are 421 kids under the age of five in, in Lake County. And we have one licensed childcare facility that is currently at capacity. And so I wonder with, with this development coming online, if there's been thought to increase demand and, and the community center location. If it is truly meant to be a childcare facility, there should be 80 square feet, 80 square feet per child in the facility based on current licensing requirements. So if, if that is a consideration, I would encourage you to reach out to the Department of Early Childhood to make sure that whatever kind of facility is, is put in that location is capable of being utilized as a childcare facility, either temporary or permanently. Both will have licensing implications and space requirements that need to be met. In looking at the, at the map, I, there's a lot of, a lot of force around the development. And so I'm wondering about wildfire mitigation for the development and the adjacent property owners. Egress for adjacent property owners. I share the same traffic concerns on 91. I don't, I don't necessarily think of the intersection of 91 and 24 as being problematic. I think of 91 going down on 91 as being problematic, where there's, there's currently a lot of issues with, with speed in that area. I, I think that that is problematic and that, that should be addressed in any kind of permitting process with CDOT. Inside the development, I, I don't see the development being. Inside the development, I, I don't see the development being oriented towards family inclusion in terms of open space. And so I would encourage some, some open space that's oriented toward equitable access to playgrounds or facilities by multiple communities. And again, that's part of the walkability between communities. The detention bond, I, both of those, I would encourage some, some work around safety in those locations. And, and yeah, I, I, I do like the trees because I live in, I live in the woods. But wildfire mitigation is a good thing. It's especially concerning if behind your house, there's, it backs up to like public property and there's not a lot of federal public property and there's not a lot of mitigation. So I think, I think that's important, putting this high of density in that location and just making sure that any kind of open space that's reserved for thinking of, of bringing in families into this location, that the open space is very well utilized for multiple communities in this situation. And that's all I have to say.
I guess that was great, yeah. The only other thing I thought about was just the, just the general like energy efficiency of the units. And I don't, this is not in my, I don't know much about it. But I, but I do know of other forklift housing projects, like in neighboring communities, where they have gone as far as, as getting some certifications, like weed certifications and things that, and even just, you know, there's a lot of roof here, so there's, there's, you know, solar here opportunity. That would.
That would be really wonderful.
Yeah, that sustainability piece. I do also wonder with, with the transit oriented development and looking at the, the parking spaces, I presume that those are parking spaces on the map. You know, with the direction of the state flowing to alleviating the parking burden and, and making people to use local homes of transportation, which has an impact on, on roadway safety and environmental concerns. If that's encouraged through limiting, limiting parking spots. I think that we've also taken that, that into consideration in our land use code. So that's just, that's just a consideration in looking at the, at the sketches.
If I, can I hop in on, on the sort of sustainability, energy side? I think that's a good point to raise. I mean, just for example, like we've been told by D O A that, you know, increasingly grant applications are going to be either scored on, you know, one of the scoring metrics or if not even an eligibility criteria, increasingly is going to be alignment with the state climate and energy goals. And I just think that's, it's going to be more and more important, just looking at where state legislation and federal incentives are going and trying to tie into that. And actually, I was curious, like, are, are you, are you served by XL natural gas? Are you? I think with push, you know, a lot of incentives from state and federal level coming for trying to explore, you know, electric options over, you know, new natural gas. So I just, yeah, keep thinking about that as you design out. And then I have one other question on that, or, or on a different topic. I started to look, go back and look at the site plan, but I'm curious, like, we've had, like, some good comments about like wanting this to be integrated into the city and the community and not sort of feel like a gated residential community kind of out there. But one, I was wondering, like, if, if you thought, i- is there either in zoning or in sort of how things pencil out or work for your vision of the development? Like small business, like really small commercial, I mean, like, like coffee shops, like trying to have sort of like your own little main street or town square, you know, community square in there. And again, I sort of, I'm not like advocating that because like on the other hand, like the pull away and make you even more disconnected, but it's a big, I mean, it's, it's a huge development. Like having it be not just pure residential, big deals to you, like you could make it feel like more of a neighborhood and sort of functioning community enough just a residential, you know, development. So.
Well, you know, one of the things that we are allowing is a temporary use of food trucks. Because I thought about that and I thought, I, I don't know, we can explore what the matrix is for how many units really support a coffee shop.
Yeah.
But I thought to myself, you know, we, we thought as a team too about this and that would be one way to be able to bring food in, right?
You're about as big as Leadville itself, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a big number. It's a big number, so we'll explore that.
But increasing the connectivity, you know, because I, I think in the past, there's been other, or different renderings of this have, have come up years and years ago. And it did include some business down there. And there actually was more opposition against that because of the, than it really is its own little place, right? It's not connected with the rest of the community. And, and so I can see both ways. I think the utilization of space out there is going to be needed for the housing. But if you're able to create the connectivity to, to be pretty great, you know, and pretty seamless, like if, between rail yards commercial and even just some of the little infill commercial going on by Safeway, if there is an easy and reasonable way to connect that, they're no further away than turquoise lake states.
Yeah.
You know, so it's really just making sure that the access is reasonable to get them to. I think from my perspective, I would rather see it be part of the Leadville community rather than creating their own community in that space.
Yeah, and it'll, and it, by increasing that density, that's going to naturally encourage all of that to, all of the in-between to.
To fill.
Redevelop and fill in.
Yeah.
I just wanted to throw out one comment back on the sustainability thing. There's one agency in town that's primarily doing a lot of energy efficiency in residential homes, which is the Cloud City Conservation Center. So I'd encourage applicants to reach out and see what types of partnerships are available and also funding mechanisms as they have access to the LEAP program and many other things. I don't know what their deal is with new construction, but they're taking the lead on that here in the county.
Yeah, great.
I have one comment. I think one of the big, big problems out there and has been brought up about that ninety-one, is it, it really needs to be taken care of now regardless of this.
Regardless of this, yeah, agreed.
And that is, this accident's waiting to happen, that's all it is. So it's important, and I'm glad that was brought up by several of you about that highway. And I think that childcare is important too, that they have enough room out there to take care of people's kids. Safeway connection is great. And another thing, you know, as much, we get a lot of snow, aren't we? We were last, lucky last winter, but as congested as this subdivision is, I don't know whether we're going to have room to put the snow on. And, and particularly if you're going to have to plow around all of these roundabouts. I'd like to hear Mike Irwin's comments about, would you rather have it straight through? Or does he like these roundabout ideas? I know roundabouts convenient, but when it's, when you got to plow them, that might be a big difference.
Yeah, so this is Mike Irwin, by the way. I heard Howard ask my, for my comments. The only problem I have with the roundabouts is they are difficult to plow. Especially with snow storage because you're plowing into four different roads possibly at one time or more. And then you have to go back and clean them. In this case, from what I understand, the county will not have to be plowing those roundabouts. And that's why I don't have a problem with them. Somebody else has to deal with it as long as that stays that way.
Yeah, that's the problem. Should be dealt with now.
In what way?
Well, well, if I, if I had anything to say about it, I'd say no roundabout. It's a lot easier to go down a straight road, plow, and then come back and get the side roads and put stop signs up.
It is, but there's such huge benefits in the like safety and speed aspects of the way that the development's set up, but I don't know if they outweigh it.
Yeah, no, no, I, I do agree with that because it does slow people down and that's the purpose of it. It, it gives them a chance to also figure out where they're going when they're going around. Like I said, my only problems are plowing, which I, I do roundabouts all the time and I'm okay with them.
Can I ask what the developer's experience in property management is? And who would be the contractor for the plowing and the maintenance in the roads? And that, and how does that fit into this picture?
Well, that, that's a good question. You know, we're at the concept stage right now and that's really a, a final stage consideration. It will be a local, as local as we can be in, in terms of property management because they got to be here when it snows, so I think.
Would, do, do they typically do an in-house thing? Would they hire like a local property management company that exists here or is that also T B D? I'm just curious about previous projects.
Brian or Michael, can you answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same answer as the G C question, so they'll use a qualified property manager. In fact, because we're applying for state and federal financing, it has to be a property manager who has experience, significant experience to be qualified by HUD. And so that'll be somebody like the Cardinal Group or another Colorado native property management company.
Cool, thanks. Hopefully they.
Yeah.
Hopefully they don't do that.
Go ahead.
Just, I'm sorry, can't help myself, come back quickly back to the roundabout question. I'm not like a huge roundabout applicant. But like in, on smaller ones, I've seen in places with snow that the roundabouts don't have fixed raised central arc, you know, street architecture. They're really just like a hump and it's more like paint that does the job to get people to like mentally slow down. And you can run a plow over the hump.
It's such a slope. Yeah, it's just not even a curve.
Well, let's see, in about three or four winters, we still.
A couple, a couple of quick notes, like, like, like it was mentioned, you know, really, these are more of a small, you know, private residential style roundabout. So really much more low profile for, for ease of, for ease of maintenance. The other thing to note is what's a little unique on these roads is most of the traffic is coming from a, an ancillary leg of the roundabout. So it's, it's not a lot of through traffic. If you think about who's taking that through route, really it's the, it's the twenty-two single family homes that travel straight on all of these. But really what they're doing is they're collecting the additional units on each, on each leg. So, so it's, it's less of your, your typical roundabout where most people are going straight and you get a few cars coming in. Really it's meant to control and, and really increase safety because it's, it's a little different in a more intimate, you know, residential setting. I, I think when, the, the other note on sustainability is that, you know, one thing that's not noted is a lot of times sustainability is the focus when it's really high density in, in high lot coverage. Part of sustainability is really keeping your, your native environment growth and also reducing your overall footprint. And, and it is hard to find many affordable products that, that are, that have such low density and low lot coverage as this one does with over twenty-five percent of four, of forty acres being maintained as native vegetation. So part of it is just reducing your footprint. You know, that's always step one is just keep the footprint small and be smart about how you develop.
The problem with going last is that everybody steals my comments. But I'll go on a couple of things. I think my first comment is I'm, I am really excited for a project like this. I think workforce and missing middle needs to be more of a focus in Lake County. So I'm really excited about a project like this and the potential of, of coming in and, and touching on that stuff. So thank you guys for bringing that forward. I'll touch quickly, the studio unit thing came up once. And I'll just say anecdotally, from my perspective, studio units do rent the very best. So they are really great rentals. They're the most sought after type, either studio or one bedroom, just most sought after type rental units that we experience. I did have a question about whether snow storage is adequate. The little tiny space, spaces on that map look really tiny to me. Of course, it's just on a little piece of paper, but it doesn't seem adequate to me with all of that parking. Those looked really small. So I think that probably has to be revisited. And I know there's lots of open space there that perhaps other pieces of that area over by the townhomes could be, or I'm sorry, next to the multifamilies could be utilized for that. But then you've got some vegetation in there. And then I did really like Kayla's comment about trying to figure out how to incorporate parks and or gathering spaces for there to be more of an outside community area other than just the, the clubhouse up front. So parking, I might go against the grain here a little bit in that I, I think just in, in my experience in seeing apartments and rental units is I think two parking spaces per unit is necessary. I agree that it means that there's a lot of parking out here, but I, it never fails that there's not enough parking. That being said, I did also have on my list the idea of whether these buildings, obviously the houses can do it, but buildings and townhomes are creating the toy storage type recreational storage because that's the, the majority of the reason why people live here. And so having that additional storage. And or pet areas is the other piece of this that we didn't really touch on, but I think probably should be explored a little bit as far as how that's creating that kind of community, what we see all the time up here situation. So eliminating a little bit of parking for some of that, I think I could get on board with. But I, I would caution against getting rid of too much of the parking that's already there. I think inevitably we always need the extra parking in there. The, I prefer the roundabouts, but I don't have to plow them, so I'll leave that to the professionals. And then, yeah, I'm a huge advocate for trying to work with the different groups on connectivity to town, both on the CDOT side, trail side, all of that, trying to get it so that it's really easy to access by other means than vehicle access. But otherwise, I, I think it's a, a cool plan. I'm excited to see something on the prospects for, for Lake County of, of something like this. Anybody have anything else?
I, I had a question on snow storage, actually. Is, is it a code requirement that a development like this can handle snow storage on-site? Or is it possible, I mean, like Leadville trucks snow out of neighborhoods? Like, is that a?
Hold on, Anna answered, but I think it's not required, but we just need a, a plan. There just has to be a plan.
You need a snow management plan. I, I would probably be cautioning against trucking it out unless, unless there was no other option. I would use that as a last means. But yes, code requires that, that they're required to provide adequate snow storage.
Yeah, and it's, it's always a little challenging on sites that are this big. You know, we have provided over two acres of snow storage. So I, I know it looks like a small blue area, but it's actually twenty-five percent of the total hard surfaced area has snow storage. So it, it's hard to see two acres on a forty acre plan set. You know, obviously that's one thing, once we get into the planning process, where those areas will be, be enlarged and, and shown in higher resolution. But, but yeah, quite a bit of snow storage, once you look at the small areas. The other thing that, on our main access road, one thing that's hard to see in this is there's actually an eight-foot detached tree lawn and an eight-foot pedestrian trail that's adjacent to that. The other side has more of your typical five-foot walking attached sidewalk. So looking at really two different pedestrian paths on each side for, for different types of travel, one being more of your wider, bikable, family style stroller type and the other being more, I'm walking to the bus stop, I want my attached sidewalk that's easy to maintain and clean. So, so that's something that you also don't see as clearly on this large plan is, you'll see it in the cross-sections, but, but there is a large eight-foot tree lawn, eight-foot trail along that hole. but, but there is a large eight-foot tree lawn, eight-foot trail, um, along that whole entire middle area. And the last piece is, we definitely have a bunch of plans that show built-out playground area, green space and dog parks. There's, there's a lot of land to work with on this, so just showing that detail is always a little tricky on these initial plans. But absolutely something we're gonna bring to you a- as we get into more detail.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, uh, now we'll start with public comment. We have one in the room. Do you have anything you wish to say? And do you just say or state your name for the record and then?
Sure, Peter Day, Twenty-Something Daisy Drive. I submitted some comments to the, um, um, Community Planning and Development, and they touched on a lot of these same things. You know, snow is important, and sidewalks have to be plowed right away. You know, and if you, if you plow snow and plow it over sidewalks and don't remove it right away, you know, it gets hard and it's even harder. So there's gotta be a plan to keep the sidewalks as clear as the, as clear as the streets. You know, I'm glad to hear about the, the playgrounds, um, and, and, um, you know, sports spaces, because I'm, as I mentioned in my comments, you know, kids would have to walk to West Park to get to any, you know, to any current recreation places, and they're, you know, it's gonna be hard to get across the, the highways. So, so that's great. You know, parking, you know, maybe even more than two, you know, I, I just see a need. I think of, you know, the folks that are gonna live here, a lot of people are gonna be contractors or laborers. They might have big trucks, they might have oversized trucks, they might have cars and work trucks. There might be emergency responders who, you know, keep their police cars overnight, so they have them to respond. So, so there's gotta be parking that, that accommodates multiple sizes and, and recognizing that people are gonna want their toys, they're gonna want their trailers. And if there are income limitations, you know, it's gonna be hard for people to have to, to pay more money to rent a garage or pay more money to store your, your equipment at Big Al's. So, the human tendency is gonna be to wanna keep it close, close to you. So, that needs to be accommodated. And then when you're plow, plow in these big parking lots, you know, where are you gonna put the cars, you know, when you, when you plow the, the other side? You know, so you've gotta have enough, enough parking space. Last thing I'll talk about, there's lots, lots talking about traffic. Um, I saw in the preliminary plans that only ten percent of it was directed towards Vale. That doesn't seem right to me. I think that hopefully the traffic studies will be refined, 'cause, 'cause it seems like there's a lot more traffic that would go to, that would go to Vale than what's currently envisioned. And lastly, on, on human nature again, maybe not quite lastly, but, but emergency egresses should be dedicated for emergencies, otherwise they need to be designed, you know, for, for greater traffic. Human tendency is, and, and the emergency egresses go off the corners of the parking lots, is to take the shortest route to where you wanna go. And if there's not a chain, to me, doesn't seem sufficient to stop that. It needs to be gated and monitored gated. Otherwise, you know, design those intersections so that they can feed into Highway ninety-one. Or that intersection of, of, um, of ninety-one B, you know, is adequate, you know, for, you know, for higher volumes of traffic. So, so I think that's just something should be considered, that you can't just say you're gonna have emergency-only egress and not have any way to, you know, to, uh, to enforce it. Otherwise, I look forward to, you know, seeing the next, uh, next stage of this and providing, providing more comments. But, uh, no, the emergency egress to, to Highway twenty-four, you know, it looked like had a big kinda hairpin turn in it. I, I kinda wonder whether in the winter, you know, fire equipment can, you know, could get up that adequately. And, um, and if there was increased traffic because emergency wasn't being properly regulated, that, that that might pose a, a danger to the, to the public. So, so I think that emergency access to Highway twenty-four and the intersection of the county road with Highway twenty-four deserves an additional essential. So, thank you.
Do I have any Zoom folks who would like to do public comment? If so, you can either raise your hand or?
Yeah, I got a few concerns, this is Andrew.
Okay, can you just state your full name for us, just for the record?
I live, uh, south of the development there. So I guess one of my concerns is what is, is there any plans on, as far as this big development these guys are planning on putting in? Noise barrier for residences on the north and south side of the development. Such a big development come into our town. Reason why we live here is to kinda get away from some of that. Another concern I had was, I don't wanna keep the dead horse here about the traffic. There was a comment made earlier about ninety-one, twenty-four not being high-volume traffic intersections, which is, I think not the case. I, I think over fifty percent of Leadville travels either to Summit County or to Eagle County. So, having the one entrance there without turning lanes on either side is, is gonna cut. I don't know if there, I know CDOT hasn't quite thought of what they're gonna do yet, but are, uh, turning lanes being considered on both ends or?
Okay, and did you have any other comments or?
No, those are the only two that I can think of right now, mostly the traffic, um. There's, everybody had said coming down from Safeway that comes in from the two lane to the one lane, and you got that hairpin turn there. Having that entrance down there with no turning lane is, is definitely gonna be dangerous on, on everybody.
Great. Okay, thank you. Uh, do I have any other, I'll, I'll just get all public comment, and then you guys can respond to everybody's. Any, any other, uh, public comment on Zoom? Okay, applicant, if you want to address any of the comments made.
Okay, well, we appreciate people's, um, interest in the project. And looking at these comments, I guess, um, I'm thinking of ones that we haven't addressed already or haven't been talked about. Cause since that we've talked about the snow and we're aware that we're gonna need to really demonstrate that we can, in fact, store the snow that's, that will accumulate on this site on our property. So we'll, we'll refine our plans and make sure we can, when we come back, that we can explain that well. I think, um, the, the traffic study will be refined as we go, uh, forward. At this point, what we were required to submit was a traffic memo. We do actually have a traffic study. We did traffic counts in July, because often in the middle of the winter, not the time to do it. So we'll, we're prepared to do a traffic impact study, and that will probably help, um, explain that intersection better. And, um, the, the chain for that, that, we, we will, um, we will block that, the emergency access in the way that, you know, actually Steve Boyle, the Fire Marshal, or Mike Irwin, Public Works Director, will require of us. And so if it's a chain or if it's an, another mechanism, then, then that's what we'll do. And they, they'll be comfortable with that. So, I think, um, noise barriers, we haven't considered. I can appreciate that, you know, this is a really major change in this area. I think, when I think about the site plan, a lot of the buildings are actually internal, more internal to the site. And, um, the parking and the other is more on the outside. It's not always true, but it's often true. And I think that's gonna help a little bit with those edges. Keeping the tree canopy is gonna help with those edges as well. So, I think those are my thoughts on the comments we received.
Yeah, just add, uh, add, just add to Melissa's comments. The, like she said, you know, what we've really done is used a lot of the garages around the outside to provide a buffer. You know, that's, that's always one technique, is to make sure we use that, that back of garage to provide a buffer between vehicles and the property boundaries. The, uh, the other thing that, that to note is like, like Melissa mentioned, every unit is, all, all the multifamily units, by, by putting the garages and parking the way we do is to, there's not a unit that's within a hundred feet of the property, the property boundary. So it, it really provides a nice barrier around the outside, aside from the single-family section, which is, which is obviously single-family, which provides a nice buffer as well, and that, and that's really along the, the treatment pond to the northwest. And, and I think the one note, a, a lot of people have mentioned garages. We do have an excess of garages, of about twenty-eight garages that, that are intended to be for, for people's, people's toys and people's storage and things that don't require parking, but give the ability for, for people to have additional storage.
Thank you. Uh, any other final questions?
I, I just, uh, after hearing Mr. Day's comments, um, and Andrew's, and, and zooming in on the, the map, the zoning control document that was provided with the file, I do definitely have concerns about the emergency egress or access, um, on the southeast corner onto ninety-one. And I do think, um, just as a, a final thought or consideration, you know, there, there is a huge commuter population, and I think in this area in particular, especially where the residence is, uh, closest to the, to the south, and the mobile home park on the north. Those are both points where natural acceleration occurs, I think, on the, on the highway on ninety-one. And, um, the county had worked previously to address those acceleration concerns in those locations. And so I, I do worry about the acceleration lane, um, on the zoning control document ending, right at that emergency egress, which is pretty close to the driveway of the residence. And would imagine that it would look similar on the other side with the, with the mobile home park. And, and there have been numerous accidents reported in those locations, not so much as at the intersection of Highway ninety-one and twenty-four, but more or less just on those single lanes of Highway on ninety-one. So I would, I would just encourage the applicant to, um, in their traffic study, work with CDOT to, to look at that and the natural acceleration that may occur there with the, the community population.
Any other? Questions or comments? Anne, did you have anything additional? Sorry, I saw you were unmuted, okay. Well, at this time, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, any comments? Okay, all in favor of closing public hearing, aye?
Aye.
We will take a minute and let the commissioners go about their evening. Thank you for your comments. Thank you guys. We'll need just a minute or two, for those of you on Zoom. I keep getting really, really hot. Okay, Anne, uh, for a, uh, just a little bit of procedure here, this is the first big application we've seen in a really long time. So, just wanna kinda, uh, regurgitate what you had said earlier. This is sketch plan, this is your, this is our opportunity to look at something as a conceptual layer with the understanding that part of this process is also advising the applicant of what our expectations are gonna be along the, for, once they come to us with preliminary plat plat. But a lot of the things that we talked about tonight are not necessarily requirements for sketch plan, but they're going to be things that this group is going to want to see during preliminary plat. Yeah, so for tackling our conditions, um, there were a lot of recommendations that were kinda spat up amongst people to the applicant. And just trying to gauge your, um, thoughts on if any additional conditions should be made based on some of the conversations tonight, or if really those are going to become conditions at preliminary plat if they haven't been addressed.
Um, no, uh, you framed that perfectly. Oh, no, I was unmuted. Um, you frame that perfectly. All statements, um, you know, made by the applicant, I, what I heard the applicant saying, uh, members of the development team, were that they wanted to address the concerns, um, that have been brought forth. If they're able to research them further and vet them, um, and bring, uh, about considerations at preliminary. So that is kind of our catch-all, um, standard, uh, condition of approval. So I didn't hear anything in opposition other than, um, you, you know, I think that the applicant may want a preliminary if there is something that they've heard tonight that they can't address, that they'll be very mindful of, including the analysis of why. If, you know, if something was brought forward this evening that, um, would be challenging, then they would be encouraged to, you know, to provide that a preliminary with supporting evidence. To that, otherwise, I didn't hear any, um, strong opposition from any one thought that was shared this evening. I think that, um, what we all heard was the applicant is engaged and interested in, in, um, the ideas and, and grateful for the input that they heard this evening.
Perfect, thank you. With that, does anybody on the planning commission want to make a motion?
I guess that being said, if, you know, if any members, um, have any one particular item that they really feel strongly that they would like to include in the recommendations, certainly, um, who can wordsmith author anything, um, over and above what's been provided to you by staff. So, um, certainly, um, you know, you could, you could add anything over and above that you felt very strong about.
Is it possible to pull up on the screen the recommended conditions? Just so we have them in front of us?
It's actually, they're not complete.
I think the only one that I would, would, I mean, and I know you have, I think, like, planning for the regional trail. And like, however, that, just that connection off of, you know, along ninety-one to connect into. Cause I think that would also then honestly put more pressure on the, the county side too, because you don't want it to just be a trail to nowhere right there, right?
That would be. Does anyone have the, the printed staff report? I'm sorry, I can't, I can't get into the network to.
I do have this.
New documents.
Do you want me to just read the conditions quickly or?
I'm sure. And, and there were a list, there were some bullet points of, and one of those is a provision of a public trail easement on the final plat along with the outer perimeter of, parameter of the development.
Right, and that isn't a specific condition, but it is within the other piece of the staff report.
Right, it's right above the possible motions in case there were just a few things up there, if you'd wanna cherry pick any of those.
Yeah, I mean, I'm generally in favor of voting in whatever staff recommended with those conditions. I would just like to see them to make sure that it is as inclusive as we thought. I can't remember if it said anything about the snow or emergency, but it would be cool if you did.
I would encourage you to also think about that we talked about some elements that, that will be required at preliminary. So snow storage will be required, um, at preliminary. There was a lot of discussion tonight, like a stormwater drainage, that, that will be addressed at preliminary. So there was a lot of discussion about future analysis that, that is just standard requirements at the next step of development. So you don't have to be worried that you ensure that there's gonna be enough snow, uh, uh, snow storage. That'll be reviewed by our engineers, um, as part of preliminary, um, as well as stormwater drainage plan, um, and that may need C.D.P.H.E. oversight. So, um, some of the, there was a lot of talk tonight of kind of some technical aspects. I think the things that, um, things that would be outside of a preliminary review or, um, you know, make the open space more intentional for families and inclusivity of, of, um, gathering places. And, um, you know, those are the kind of things that might not be necessarily addressed. However, again, I would say I feel like the applicant heard those takeaways on the chari- characteristics and nature of the development. Um, and so that may be enough, because I think they feel probably pretty informed this evening. But the technical aspects will come at the preliminary point and they're required by code automatically.
That makes sense. Agreed, and, uh, just one step further on that is that if we get to preliminary and any of these components are not addressed, like we spoke about tonight, that is still an opportunity at that time to condition at that time.
That's correct.
I feel like in, uh, at this stage, we actually have far more detail on this subdivision than I, I'm necessarily used to at sketch plan, which makes you wanna get even more detail. And I, I would say that there's still so much studying that has to happen, and the applicant has already done an amazing amount thus far, but that I, I would, I would almost say that this meeting tonight and the conversation within tonight really drives them in the direction that we want them to go. But that adding conditions for items that haven't been researched yet and, and the technical pieces haven't been done yet maybe doesn't make sense at this point, but could absolutely make sense at preliminary plat. So I would probably say that the commission, the conditions you already have on here makes sense to me to not add them, all of the extra that we talked about. But I'm open to hearing what others feel.
Reason why I would say is maybe it's just like, and consider X, Y, and Z, I, as Ann kind of bolded out, just so that it is written down.
Yeah.
So we don't all lose.
And we don't lose it. So, so it's not, and again, I think it's kind of to what Ann pu- put, then, then the development team knows that, you know, if it's not a possibility, then, 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 you know, share, share why, how it was researched and why it ended up not being a possibility, if that.
So then I think we would have to make a pretty big list of con- consider then. Like not, because these don't even include things like the family or open space areas, the childcare, well, actually childcare is an actual condition.
I feel like the applicant addressed a lot of that. I feel like with the minute, m- meeting minutes, it's not like we've lost anything. And I agree with staff that the applicant seems to have provided a huge amount of information and has received comments in good faith. And, you know, I think the second, the preliminary plat is, like the chairman says, the right time to address those. And I'm curious, what happens if at that next time, there's a ton of public comment and it's a whole big thing? And I'm curious if there are other consequential changes at that meeting that have to happen? Is there a subsequent preliminary plat, part two? Or how does, how does that get addressed? Cause I think some of the concern here is like, we want them to get this all right by the next time. It's possible, and I trust that they're gonna do a good job of that. But if they don't, for whatever reason, our fault, their fault, no one's fault, then what happens?
Ann, I'll let you.
You have, you have a couple of different options. One is, um, that you put those conditions in place that, that you want, that you feel were deficient at preliminary. So you can, you can condition a preliminary approval, just like you can a sketch. Um, and that's a really important place to do that, because it's, you know, it's final, right before final. Or if something was really extenuating that, um, had a, a huge degree of concern that maybe applicant didn't receive the message, um, this evening, then you could always table, um, to a date certain when you would like the applicant to come back with more information. Say, you know, you could say, I'm not really wanting to condition this because I still feel like I would like to have more information before making a recommendation. And so you could take a timeout, table it with a specific ask of the development to come back with that information. And you could potentially ask for a tabling of the, um, but typically, um, and particularly this development, I would say, is very poised on deadlines because of their funding. And so I would imagine that you've got a lot of incentive to really try to hear what the board and, and planning commission had to say tonight in the public and really come back with a very, um, responsive preliminary plan just because of the, the level of intricacy associated with, um, the deadlines associated with their funding.
Cool, thanks, Ann. If that's the case, I think we vote for the conditions as outlined by staff. If that's okay with you.
Add the trail.
I, I, I think we'll, I think we'll get the trail. I don't think, I don't think not having it in this means we miss it, right?
No, but I think, I think by adding it as a condition, this is very important. Like, this is, and then this, I mean, cause the B.O.C.C. will still have their step two. So, so I think it's, it's a communication tool also from the planning commission to the B.O.C.C. that the planning commission feels very strongly about this, and that's what, thus, the added condition. I think, um, and if, and, yeah, I, um, I don't think it's, I, again, I, I, I don't necessar- I, I don't, I do think that the developer will do it. I just also think that it says, it sh- it shows our priority. Like it shows the planning commission priority to the rest of, you know, the county government or whoever would be on the other side of that trail that would need to get it into town, right, bring it up.
Sure.
I'm, I'm pro-trail. Go ahead, Ann.
I, I would say there's gonna be a lot of, um, there's gonna need to be a lot of county participation in those next steps, because we have a lot of privately owned parcels. And so the good, the great news is that we have, so the development can do their part, but they're not gonna be able to solve the whole, um, connectivity challenge. Um, but the great news is, is that we now have a pros department who has set some real intentional open space initiatives. And so I think that's great, but absolutely, I, I think maybe what you're getting at it, Abby is, is just highlighting that the planning commission stands behind that connect, that connectivity need. And so to inspire the, the county to continue building out that connectivity perhaps. But I would say the developmental is going to be able to do a piece of that.
Yeah, for sure.
I like it. So, we're gonna have two motions. The first one will be on sketch plan, file twenty-three dash thirteen. Uh, subdivision sketch plan, sorry. Then it will be P.U.D. sketch plan. Okay. Go ahead and go then.
Yep.
Just like, this is the motion for conditional approval? That we're about to do?
Yes, it's gonna be.
Okay, great.
I move the planning commission recommend conditional approval to the Board of County Commissioners of File twenty-three dash thirteen, the Gateway Village Major Subdivision Sketch Plan, located north of the city of Ludville on four sixteen P.T. ditch placer fourteen dash zero nine eighty, or dash eighty. Um, account numbers R zero zero three five three, R zero zero three two two nine, R zero zero eight two one five, and I realize I missed a zero on the first one. R zero 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 three five three. Um, containing forty-three point three seven acres with the following conditions. One, the Division of Water Resources comments that the office, uh, does not have information on file regarding Parkville's ability to supply the development as is required by state statute and must be provided to the state engineer's office. This matter shall be adequately addressed prior to the submittal of the preliminary plan. Two, the D.W.R. notes that the stormwater detention and infiltration facility may also be subject to statutory and administrative requirements. This will, this also will necessarily need to be accomplished to adequately review the preliminary plan. The applicant shall make, uh, direct contact, oh, number three, the applicant shall make direct contact with the U.S. Corps of Engineers to verify section four oh four does not apply. Four, the applicant shall ensure the formal submission of a traffic impact study to C.D.A. And also, um, and address potential need for an access permit for the emergency ingress egress. Five, the applicant shall include childcare facilities within the zoning control document. Six, the applicant, the applicant shall review the county engineer comments and address them at or prior to preliminary plan. Seven, the applicant must be compliant with Lake County ten forty-one regulations. Eight, all statements made by the applicant in their application and in hearing are considered as conditions of approval unless otherwise modified, unless modified by other conditions of approval. Nine, the applicant shall consider provision of a public trail easement on the final plat along the outer perimeter of the development. And to make the, and making the following findings. One, that as conditioned, the proposed sketch plan is consistent with the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. Two, that as conditioned, the proposed sketch plan is consistent with the Lake County Land Development Code. Three, that as conditioned, the proposed sketch plan is spatially efficient. Four, that as conditioned, the proposed sketch plan is suitable for development. Five, that as conditioned, the proposed sketch plan is compatible with surrounding uses. And six, that as conditioned, the proposed sketch plan does, does have adequate facilities.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second, then.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Jamie Seifer.
Aye.
Howard Tripp.
Aye.
Abby Dahman.
Aye.
Heather Lynn, aye. Okay, now we have
Let's do it again.
A motion for P.U.D. sketch plan approval.
Does it say it's a subdivision anymore?
Yeah.
Do we need to add the trail condition to the P.U.D. approval? Okay.
But this is, this should say.
Yeah, you can just say that it's, uh, the P.U.D.
Okay.
Sketch plan.
Okay.
File twenty-three dash fourteen, I think, is the planned unit development.
I move that the planning commission recommend conditional approval to the Board of County Commissioners of File twenty-three dash fourteen, the Gateway Village, uh, planned unit development sketch plan located north of the city of Ludville on four sixteen P.T. ditch placer fourteen dash zero nine dash eighty, account numbers R zero 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 three five three, R zero zero three three, or three two two nine, and R zero zero eight two one five, containing forty-three point three seven acres with the following conditions. The Division of Water, sorry, this is the same, isn't it? Okay.
Yeah.
The Division of Water Resources comments that the office does not have information on file regarding Parkville's ability to supply the development as is required by state statute and must be provided by the state engineer's office. This matter shall be adequately addressed prior to the submittal of the preliminary plan. Two, the D.W.R. also notes that stormwater detention and infiltration facility may also be subject to statutory and administrative requirements. This also will necessarily need to be accomplished to adequately review the prelim- preliminary plan. Three, the applicant shall make direct contact with the U.S. Corps of Engineers to verify that section four oh four does not apply. Four, the applicant shall ensure the formal submission of the traffic impact study to C.D.A. And address the potential need for access permit for the emergency egress and ingress. Five, the applicant shall include childcare facilities within the zoning control document. Six, the applicant shall review the county engineer comments and address them at or prior to preliminary plan. Seven, the applicant shall be compliant with Lake County ten forty-one regs. Eight, the, all statements made by the applicant in their application and in hearing are considered as conditions of approval unless modified by other conditions of approval. And nine, um, that the applicant shall consider provision of the public trail easement on the final plat along the outer perimeter of the development. And making the following findings. One, that as conditioned, the proposed sketch plan is consistent with the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. Two, that as conditioned, the proposed sketch plan is consistent with the Lake County Land Development Code. Three, that as conditioned, the proposed sketch plan is spatially efficient. Four, that as conditioned, the proposed sketch plan is suitable for development. Five, that as conditioned, the proposed sketch plan is compatible with surrounding uses. And six, that as conditioned, the proposed sketch plan does have adequate facilities.
Anyone want a second?
I do. I second it.
Great. Any discussion on the motion? Jamie Seifer.
Aye.
Howard Tripp.
Aye.
Abby Dahman.
Aye.
Heather Lynn, aye.
You know, I wanna add one thing. For all the years we've been doing this, this is one of the better sketch plans we've had so far.
Very, very well thought out.
Good job, yeah.
Very well thought out.
This guy would know.
Yeah.
Uh, now we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I am moving adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, thank you guys.
We appreciate you.
Hey, all that are in Ludville. It snowed here today, and we're really jealous of you being in Austin or whatever other amazing place you're in at, so.
Heather, this is all from the views of all planning commissioners.
A big thank you to C.C. Thank you, C.C.
Yeah, C.C.
Bryce, Bryce, I hear Bryce. Thank you, Bryce. Thank you, C.C.